Thank you to our staff up in the sound booth and to our staff here. We're going to call our meeting to order, my colleagues here. So I'm going to welcome everyone here today. We have our CEO of our State Association, Andrea Messina with us. We have our Board Attorney, and then there's our support staff, Ms. Peck and Ms. Green. Thank you all for getting this ready for us today. And a couple of the chiefs sitting over here to our left. And my colleagues say good morning to all of you all. And so we scheduled this workshop, you know, we voted on, and I can't remember the date now. I don't have my calendar out, let me get that out. That we would have, we would use Florida School Board Association to do our superintendent search, and that we would invite the CEO down to do this workshop with us, since there are four of us who've never been through this process. Our colleague, Dr. McNeely, has gone through it since her tenure on the board. The process, I've gone through it as a citizen, sitting out in the audience, but never since I've been elected. And so I thought it would be prudent to have Andrea come with us and spend some time with us and go through the process, what we'd expect, our roles, their roles, all that kind of stuff. So I'm going to turn it over. She's prepared a presentation, and she'll go through it and tell us how she wants to do this. Questions, as they come up, Indiana, whatever, okay?
Sure. And thank you and good morning, Board members. I am here to provide information and answer questions. So if any time along the way you have a question, just feel free to throw it out there. I will tell you that as of today, FSBA is currently fully engaged with four superintendent searches, with a fifth that we're still talking about a timeline on. So there's a lot going on. Then there are also three searches currently that we're not engaged in, but other companies are. And there's another district that's currently negotiating with an internal applicant because they had a retirement. So there's a lot of movement right now with superintendent searches. As of, as I said, I'm kind of passing through today, which is one reason Tina and I had a hard time coordinating schedules. We've got Brevard County tomorrow is going to be selecting their superintendent from three finalists, and then Charlotte County's interviewing four finalists later this week. Manatee County's interviewing three finalists the following week, and Osceola's going to be picking there. So there's a lot of movement. But in essence, appointed superintendents, there are a number of ways of selecting an appointed superintendent, one of which is just appointing somebody that's internal, because you've developed the bench, you've kind of given that mandate to the sitting superintendent. That has happened before. That's one district that I was referencing. Martin County, their superintendent announced he was retiring. The board said, well, you know, I think him, this guy right over here, is the one we've been training, so what does the board think about that? And do we want to do a full-on search, or is he the right guy? They all agreed, let's enter into negotiations, and that's where they are. And if the negotiations work well, he'll be the next superintendent. That's one way. Another way is to, and I was explaining this to one of you recently, Miami Dade, a few, golly, call it within the last six months, when Alberto Carvalho was leaving, they had a search, but they had a very quick, very fast search. They actually advertised for eight days. When that happens, and districts advertise in such a short time period, it typically sends the message to applicants, we already know who we want, but we're going to go through the motions. They interviewed three finalists, and then they hired Dr. Jose Dotres, who was in Collier County, but previously in Miami Dade. So they knew him, and they brought him in. That was a really accelerated search, eight-day advertisement. Then you have anything from, call it two and a half months, to in some districts, when they change from elected to appointed, they had two years. So there's any timeframe in between. Most of the timeframes are dictated by how long you advertise, and we can talk about that in a minute when I show you some of the considerations, and also to what degree you're going to have involvement with the community. But let's just jump right in. The one thing I like to remind Board members is that your selection of superintendent as a Board member is the single most important decision you'll make as a Board member, who the instructional leader of your district is going to be. So it's not a decision to enter into lightly. Tina mentioned that Dr. McNeely participated with us when we did a previous search, and we had a lot of activities along the way and a lot of input opportunities for the community. And it is a very difficult decision. And sometimes you're outvoted, and sometimes you're in the majority, but no matter who the board decides, the job of the board, when you make a decision, is to find a way for that person to be successful, because that person's success typically will equate with the district's success. There's not a lot of notes that you'll need to take specifically on the slides, but I'm certainly going to leave it with your IT group, and they can forward it to you. But what I want to point out is that there are 29 appointed superintendents in Florida. Not every district, as you know, in Florida is an appointed superintendent. And after 2020, you can see the ones with the red, or excuse me, the yellow circles. Those superintendents have been changed since 2020. There's been a lot of change across the state. And then we have the ones with the yellow stars that are added there. Those are the ones that are currently seeking superintendents. So we've got, moving down on the West Coast, we've got Manatee, Charlotte, Sarasota, Collier, kind of that little chunk over there. Then we've got, coming up around the other side, Broward. We've got Martin, who, as I said, is negotiating internally. We've got Brevard. We've got Osceola, Flagler, as of a few weeks ago. So there's a lot of districts right now in the process of turning things over. I do like to point out to people that there is no Superman or Superwoman. So the idea that there's this perfect superintendent out there waiting in the wings, I need to dispel immediately. Every applicant is going to come to you with strengths and areas where they need more support. So I just want to try to manage expectations and make sure you know there is no Superman or Superwoman. There are a few things that are consistent throughout a superintendent search, and those things are the Sunshine Law, so everything's done in the open, public records, which means even the notes you're taking right now, somebody could ask to see, public records. And then public input. We try to have public input all along the way in various forums. Some of it is through electronic platform. Matter of fact, just this morning, I closed out, last week, Brevard had their public interviews. They were videotaped. They've been on their website all weekend. Citizen, and they also had a meet and greet where people could come and meet the finalists. And so then we have a input portal where people can put in their, the strengths that they see from the applicants and questions that they still have. I cut it off last night at 9:00 PM because the board needs to start thinking about their decision. Sent the board the report, like I said, last night, 9:15. That was the final piece of electronic input. But even at the meeting tomorrow morning, they'll still have an opportunity for public input. It's all along the way. But before the search, there's a number of things that you're going to want to think about. And typically, you will want to have consultants. I'm not here to try to get your business. We do, as I mentioned, we're working with some other districts. That's something we can talk about later. But in general, whether it's us or another group, what having consultants will do for you is manage the process as well as keep staff at arm's length, so there's no accusation or hint of impropriety, especially if you have internal applicants. The HR department, you want to keep them above reproach, and the way to do that is to have a step removed. That's one of the benefits, as well as kind of managing things for Board members along the way. I'm going to keep referencing Brevard because theirs is the most recent, where they are in the process. On my drive here this morning, I had a conversation with every one of the five Board members, because their decision meeting is tomorrow. And I said, here's how the meeting's going to work, here's what you can expect, here's how it typically runs, sent them a copy of the protocol script for the chair, so they know exactly what to expect, any questions that they had, final questions of applicants or anything they could ask. We try to prep you before every meeting, just so that you have all the information that you need. Typically, before a search, we like to conduct what's called a pre-search review. And one of the reasons we do a pre-search review, we do it in the form of a workshop, similar to this, and we have a list of questions that we like to go through with the board. One reason it's important is because we want to make sure that all Board members agree, yep, this is where we are on the strategic plan, yep, this is where we are with the community, yep, this is where we are with academics, yep, this is where we are with the union, so that we all have a common sort of baseline agreement. And by recording it, candidates can watch that and make sure that they understand where everything is. It also gives us a real detailed insight. We've worked with your district many, many times over the years, but things change. We have new Board members, so dynamics change and relationships change. And that way, we have a full and complete understanding, because applicants will call, even if we work with you or not, they'll still call us because they know we work with you, and ask questions, you know, where's the board on this? Does the board have common agreement? Is it a split board? Is it a board that has agreement? You know, they want to know these things, so they kind of understand the landscape of the district. So we go through a pre-search review. Typically, that's about hour and a half, two-hour workshop. If you have a retiring superintendent or a superintendent who's going to stay in the district, we ask for them to participate, if the board wants them to, to get their perspective on some things as well. You're also going to want to, before you do a search, do some community input. That way, you know where the community is, you know what the community's priorities are. Some of you just came off the campaign trail, so you heard and interacted with many members of the community. But you might not have specifically asked them questions related to superintendent search. And so this way, you can kind of see what is important to the community, what kind of educational leader are they looking for? Or are they looking for a leader that may not even be an educational leader? Could just be a leader, like a CEO-type leader, that maybe has no education background. We've had districts, some districts look for non-traditional candidates. Other districts are very specific. It's pretty clear through input that the community is looking for someone who's been a principal, someone who's been in some of the educational settings. But not every district finds that to be important. So the community input helps to kind of guide the board and let them know what's important to the community. One of the things you want to decide is, is there going to be any overlap between the sitting superintendent and the new superintendent? And if there is going to be overlap, is it going to be, you know, a two-week overlap, a month overlap, things like that? Because that has to get built into the timeframe for starting date. And then also is the timeline. And as I mentioned, typically, a pretty thorough search can be done in three months if you're going to advertise for, we recommend that you do not advertise for any less than four weeks, but six weeks is ideal. But depending on the number of community input sessions that you would want, in the past, well, let's say before COVID. COVID changed everything. Before COVID, we would have and recommend minimum of three large community forums where people would come. We would, we have a protocol that we use to try to identify what they believe the qualities and qualifications are for the next superintendent. But since COVID, it's been very clear, nobody shows up for the physical meetings. We can plan them. We've had eight people show up, 10 people, very large districts. I've had Board members look me in the face, oh, no, you'll have several hundred in my district, so we schedule it. 10 people show up. And so it may not be the best use of staff time and resources, because you have to keep the school open late, make sure you have a custodian, all that kind of stuff. But the online surveys have exploded. So we typically run an online survey for two to three weeks, and where before we would get a few hundred results, now we're in the thousands many times, depending on how your communications team helps to kind of push it out to the community. But you can get a lot of really good information from the online survey, and that can also help to keep your timeline, depending on what kind of timeline you're looking for. During the search, there's a number of steps. First, as I mentioned before, is kind of input, both internal and external. The board has to talk about, all right, here's the information we got from this online survey. Here's what we know from people. What are we looking for in the next superintendent? The board has to really decide, based on input, what you're looking for. And it's really important that the board is clear what they're looking for. I'll give you some examples. Years ago, there was a school district, I don't know if anybody in here used to work there, but you'll recognize it if you did. There was a board meeting where the district had already had, I want to say, an $8 million shortfall in self-funded health insurance. And that happened three or six months prior. And then the superintendent found another $3 million shortfall financially on something. And truly, at the school board meeting on a Tuesday, they were all up there at the dais, the superintendent's had Board members, I have bad news, I found an additional $3 million deficit, I'm going to resign right now. Literally, he walked out of the board meeting, during the board meeting, and left. Nobody knew it was happening. So they recessed the board meeting, somebody called me, Andrea, what do we do? I said, well, you got to find somebody in the room and make them enter them, because you got to have a superintendent. And, you know, it might not be two weeks until you figure out what to do, but you got to buy yourself some time. At that point, that district needed somebody who had strong financial acumen, okay? But then five years later, when they got things back in order, they didn't necessarily need strong financial acumen. So your priorities of what the board is looking for on any given time is going to shift and change based on where the district is. So what you need today is different than what you needed six months ago, five years ago, and what you're going to need in the future. So we talk about the qualifications as a group, then we begin to advertise. And there are a number of places to advertise. We try to help you see different options. Some cost more than others, but as I said, we typically would want you to advertise between four and six weeks, especially if you're going to be advertising summer, fall, when people are distracted with family and with holidays and back to school, because people who are going to be applying typically are going to be leaders of school districts, and they're going to be in the mindset of getting their own district up and running wherever they are. Then you're going to want to get some community guidance. Again, like I said, with, since COVID, it's been a little bit different. Sometimes, in the past, we have had community advisory committees, but what I will tell you is the tenor of public involvement and the criticism that people come under just by participating in something like that has changed. Where before, it was seen as, oh, this is great, representing the community. Now, if a community member is sitting on a community advisory committee, and there's a certain applicant that that person doesn't necessarily think is probably the best, people are starting to picket a citizen's business and things like that. So citizens have come under undue scrutiny by trying to help a district, and it really exposes citizens in ways that heretofore, we didn't see that two years ago. Pinellas said, absolutely not, we're not going to put our community through it. Charlotte said, or Orange said, absolutely not, we're not putting our community through it. Brevard's not doing it. Charlotte's not doing it. Manatee's not doing it. It's just the tenor of social media these days is, people are not in the same place that they used to be, and maybe we'll get back there, but it's, you all signed up for it because you ran for public office. But a lot of citizens who are just trying to help didn't sign up for the attacks that come with some of that public exposure. So we are currently not advising that. But, you know, stranger things could happen. We also, after you, after you decide your advertisement, then you start prioritizing, you look at, okay, here's what we said we were looking for in a superintendent, and here are the applicants that meet this criteria. The goal is really to keep the pool open as broadly as you can, as long as you can, because you want somebody that all Board members can support and work with in the end. And the way to do it is to not be stuck on, I only have one person that can fit this bill for me. Because then, if that person doesn't fit the bill for the other four Board members, it can already create a contentious situation. The idea of a superintendent search, really, our goal, and I think the goal of anybody else that would work with a school district, is it should be a uniting exercise for the board and for the community, both internal and external. So the idea is that it's very uniting, brings people together. And then you'll do some interviews, both public and one-on-one typically. After that, the board will select who, and typically, that's what I said Brevard is going to be doing tomorrow. It may be quick and easy, it may be difficult. I've been in a selection meeting where the first motion didn't get a second, and so that failed. And then the second motion got a second, but when they voted, motion failed. And then the third motion got a second, discussion, voted, also failed. And they were like, okay, what do we do? And they ended up having to go to their fourth motion, they got a superintendent, it was a split vote, obviously, ended up being a 4-1 vote, and that person's been there now for about two years. But it may be a difficult discussion, because you got to get to where you can all support the decision. But then I've also seen it where it's very obvious, and a 5-0 vote, and everybody agrees this is the right person, because during the interviews, it just became obvious, this is the right person. So it can go either way. But even after you select a superintendent, it's not done, because then you have this transition time, and you have a negotiation time. So it's rare, but it can happen, where, as I said, Martin County's currently in negotiations with somebody. Quite frankly, I would have thought that could have happened quicker. So something's causing the negotiations not to go as smoothly as I think some people would have thought. So it's not always a done deal, just because you select somebody. You got to get the negotiations and the contract together. And then you figure out, as I said, with a transition, are they going to, sometimes if it's somebody from out of district, it might be somebody that typically they'll need to put in some notice, and typically, they're somebody that has high levels of responsibility, so they'll have to phase out their projects at home to come here. Sometimes it looks like maybe they're able to come on a Friday and a Monday every two weeks to do a little transition. Sometimes it might be they stay home for a week, come here for a week, go back home for a week to clear things up. So there are some transitional timeframes that you'll have to think through. And then you have a start date. And once that start date comes, again, the board's job here is not done, because then the board and the new superintendent have to sit down and say, okay, how are we going to do our work together? What do we expect communication-wise? What do we expect with, you know, when there's a citizen complaint? What are our protocols? So everybody knows the clarification of expectations. That's the single most important thing to determine whether or not the district is going to be successful with the new superintendent or not, is being very, very clear in expectations. When we talk about the timeline, as I mentioned, it can go anywhere from, I've seen it two years, but that's simply because of a transition from elected to appointed superintendent. But typically, it can go anywhere from ideally, what would that look like? Two and a half months, could go to four months, could go to six, eight, depending on what you're looking for and how much you want to do. But that's a little bit negotiable, depending on when you need someone to start. Brevard was on a pretty aggressive timeline, they only advertised for three weeks. So they were moving fast, but they were very intentional. They wanted to move fast, because they wanted first crack at the applicants. And so when they found out there were all these other searches going on, they pushed it up because they wanted first crack at the applicants. Sometimes people talk about whether or not you need to do a local search versus a Florida search versus a national search. And what I would tell you is that because of the internet, that's sort of a false concern. Any search that you do is going to be nationally exposed because of the way people have the algorithms to find openings. So any search you do will be a national search. How national you expose the district to depends on where you advertise. So for example, if you truly were saying, we don't need to go beyond Florida, then you would advertise to the Florida school districts, you would advertise through Florida Association of School Administrators, there's a few other little Florida-specific things. But you probably wouldn't go to Ed Week, which is a national publication where nationally people look for these types of jobs. Question?
So Andrea, with the existing searches that we have that you're, you all are managing through or going on in Florida, have you heard if they're trying to stay, like Florida, or they've been nationwide? You know, given the political climate that we're in in Florida, what, where have the applicants been from?
Good question. We have some national, I'll call them applicants, but that doesn't mean they applied. People who are interested, who ask a lot of questions, right now, we've seen some, we've seen fewer national applicants than we have heretofore. But what I will also tell you is Florida deputy superintendents and assistant superintendents and people at that level across the state are applying more than they did before, because they actually see opportunity now. But some people, some very competent future superintendents are sort of putting a pause on their application status, because they are waiting for sort of the tenor to die down a little bit. People don't know what's happening in Florida, I think, and they read headlines, and so some of it is, they just don't know. People in Florida know, but people out of Florida don't. So it, not as much as we've seen in the past.
I was wondering about that. I was, I kind of heard from Terry and Osceola that they didn't have a lot of folks outside of Florida. So I was just wondering if that was the tenor with all the other searches.
But I will also tell you this. A while ago, we were in a school district, very high-achieving school district, that was looking for a superintendent. And we had one Board member from the dais say, we have an internal And we had one board member from the dais say, we have an internal candidate, I don't even know why we're doing a search. So we talked to him and we were like, geez, you can't say that, buddy. Help a girl. And he kept saying it every meeting, because that's the candidate he wanted. And that deterred applicants. I have another situation where a very well-respected superintendent from another state, and by well-respected, he was the superintendent of the year in his state, had applied in a Florida district, but a board member there also said, I don't know why we're looking outside of state, Florida has enough good people. And he said, you know, I just, it's a lot to, when you apply to be a superintendent, you expose yourself. And he felt like it was, he didn't have confidence that he was going to get a fair shake, so he ended up pulling out. And so what board members say also can help drive a candidate pool or limit a candidate pool. And that's the number one question we get from applicants is, do they have an internal candidate? Are they just going through the motions? And they need to be convinced that you don't in order for them to expose themselves publicly. Because it really is, the minute their name hits the papers, if they're already in a school district as a sitting superintendent, their current board then begins to distrust them. And that puts them at odds. And even if they're just trying to go to a larger district and build their career, it's a risk for them. So they really think through it and they want to know they're going to get a fair shot or else, you know, they don't want to put themselves and their family through it. So, yeah.
I had a question. So you said Brevard did a three-week search. In that three-week search, how many candidates applied?
They got, I want to say, let me tell you for sure, because I don't want to guess, I think it was 33. As I said, we're doing a lot right now and I don't want to get it wrong. 33. But what I will say is Brevard also set the salary, they were not shy where they were setting the salary, which has moved all the other districts to have to increase their salary as well. They set the salary 225 to 300, which was a, and I didn't recommend them going that high, to be honest with you. And the amount that I recommended, I think went as high as 275. And they were not happy with me because they said I was undercutting it. And I was like, I'm not recommending 300,000. But they went to 300,000. And that also is a reason why some people are like, well, for 300,000, I'll consider it. Yeah. So there are some elements there. It's not just the length of time. You throw 300,000 on the table and somebody's going to look at it.
Andrea, what's their student population? I'm sorry. What's their population, Brevard?
Their student population is over 100,000. Yeah.
Thank you. So I see a couple.
I don't have a question, and I have just a comment that you're making me relive.
I hope it's not a bad experience.
Uh huh. But one of the things, we had excellent applicants before. But again, the board was insistent, you could almost feel it, we had community workshop input sessions. We had a lot of things going on. But there were board members who were adamant that it was going to be the individual internally. And so unfortunately, and I just wrote his name down, my favorite, I got picked up in Volusia.
Yes, ma'am.
And so it's tough when we go through this, but if you've already got your mind made up, then I say, why have FSBA?
Or anyone.
Or anyone. Because it's money wasted and time wasted, to me.
Brevard has 74,000 students. So it's much larger, and that's why when they put 300 on the table, I was, that was a lot. But it attracted applicants.
Put them like where Broward is.
Broward is...
I'm sorry, salary-wise?
Beyond 300, I know that. I'm not doing that search.
I thought they were close to half a million in Broward.
It wouldn't surprise me.
Is it? I thought, I thought Cartwire was just over three.
I could be wrong, but I thought they were.
It wouldn't surprise me. And remember, Broward's had some tough times, so they have to...
Pay a premium.
Draw somebody in, they know there's some work to do there. And so we talked about community advisory, and I just kind of wanted to loop back with that. It's not like it used to be, it used to be, we would say, you absolutely should have a community advisory committee. But I personally don't recommend exposing people to that like we once had. So I just wanted to mention that again. Qualities and qualifications, some school districts decide that the person has to have a doctorate degree. Some say it's preferred but not required. You guys, with the University of Florida here, you know, there's a strong academic focus here, so you're going to want to think through that. But also, if you're looking for a non-traditional candidate, many non-traditional candidates might have an MBA, or they might not even have that if they've got experience leading companies. Dr. Rockwell?
This might not be a question for you, but for Mr. Delaney. Our job description for the superintendent still includes an ed leadership certification, does it not? If it does, would we need to revise that?
Sorry, I would, I would need to confirm that, but I think your points will take it. We need to take a look at that description, certainly before we're advertising.
Yeah, so that matches what our priorities are for qualifications, because especially bringing up like a non-traditional candidate, they wouldn't have that certification.
Some districts say, I'm trying to remember how they worded exactly, but it might be ed leadership eligible, or willing to get ed leadership within X number of years, if that's important to them. And others, once you go through and figure out the qualities, the qualifications and all that, then we do recommend that you go back and look at your job description to see if there are any edits that need to be made. Because the job description, I don't know when it was written, but I'm guessing it was several years ago. And who knows, you may, you may have some changes that you'd like to see in there. As far as qualification, or excuse me, qualities, that's going to be the ones that are typically unique to your current circumstance. Some districts, right now, we need educational leader turnaround schools. And so that's really what you're looking for. You tell people, emphasize, we really want to know how you've turned around schools. Other districts, it might be, maybe they're getting ready to pass a referendum. We need someone who's passed a referendum successfully and knows how to engage the community. Other districts, as I said, it could be finance, could be anything, depending on what the needs of the district are. Maybe, maybe you're going under a major construction project, or you're getting ready to have exponential growth. So then somebody that has experience in growth, whatever that is, you guys get to decide. And then that's what you really want to look for when we start, you start getting applications. We've already talked briefly about compensation, but we really only have talked about it in regard to base salary. There are other pieces of compensation, especially if you have somebody from out of state, and they may have an out-of-state retirement plan, so there may be some retirement considerations. Some people have young children, and so they might want more in the base salary. Other people may not have young children, and they may want deferred compensation. It's all kind of negotiable typically. Part of compensation, if you're bringing somebody in from out of county, would include a relocation. Many times, it's a one-time, I think it's up to, what we typically recommend is up to whatever the amount is with receipts, you know, whatever, whatever they spent up to a certain amount gets reimbursed, as opposed to just giving somebody a blanket amount of money. But also with regard to compensation, things like use of a vehicle, I don't know if you guys have a fleet here, or if you give a vehicle monthly allowance, I don't know how you guys work that. But those are the types of things that would be considered part of compensation, as well as memberships to organizations, trainings, certain things like that. So base salary is what will attract people. Compensation package is what kind of gets negotiated. Vetting, you are definitely going to want to vet all of your candidates to make sure that you know sort of what you're getting into. I will say that the internet makes vetting a whole lot easier than it used to be, but it's also not always accurate. So let's go back to the, there's no Superman or Superwoman. One thing I try to make sure board members understand is that every single applicant you get will have something. I don't know what it is, but everyone will have something. It could be a lawsuit that was filed against that person, maybe because they were an administrator at a school where something happened. It doesn't necessarily mean they were personally culpable, but because they had authority in a certain job that they had, their name could be on multiple lawsuits. If somebody is an ESE person, for example, you'll see a lot of lawsuits related with that. Sometimes when you do background searches, and you cannot do a full background search, deep, deep, deep dive, until there's an offer of employment on the table, your HR department will do the full, full, full deep dive. But prior to that, there are ways to find out about lawsuits and things like that. And something always comes up, always. It could be, we had, we had one applicant who had a, I call it a hit, when we did the background search, and it was a hit on a foreclosure. And I was like, ooh, that's not good for a superintendent. So we called the applicant and said, hey, what's going on with this? Well, it wasn't his foreclosure. He sold the house to some people, and the people he sold it to is who was having the foreclosure. But because he was the seller in the transaction, his name was on some papers. So it was, got to clear it up, got to see what's happening. On first glance, might not have looked great, but upon further investigation, there was an explanation. I remember the applicant who, when we did a background search on him, he had, I think it was 16 traffic tickets? And I was like, buddy, what's going on? You know, that's, that's not a event, that's a pattern? And when, when we looked at it, several of them were failure to maintain insurance. And it was kind of recent. It wasn't like, there will always be youthful indiscretions, I want to be clear about that. A lot of people in college were with somebody in a car, maybe there was something in the backseat that they didn't know about. One-time thing, they do a diversion program, and they've gone on to have very successful careers, including holding teaching certificates and all kinds of things. That's a youthful indiscretion. This was sort of current. And I said, I, what's happening here? And he said, I'm willing to defend it. And I said, okay, but I just need you to know, as a potential superintendent candidate, this could hit the paper, and then you really are in, I have to talk to the board members about this. I have to make sure board members understand, because if it hits the paper and they didn't know, they're going to blame me. He said, fine, fine, fine. So, okay. I tell the board members, of course it hits the papers, and then he withdraws. And it's, I tried to prevent that, you know, but something will always come up. Everyone has something. I was caught speeding in a school zone one time in Stark. I think you all probably have had that experience with me, anybody that lives around here. So if you did a background on me, you're going to find that. It doesn't look good, speeding in a school zone, how do you defend that? In my role, it's hard, but there will be something on every applicant, I need you to know that.
So I have a question. It sounds as if FSBA does the vetting process, or is that something done within the district?
If we are, whoever your search consultant is, will do a certain amount of vetting, yes, ma'am. We do it for the districts that we work with. We do an Accurate Search, which is a legal through a law firm in Orlando, as well as social media searches and things like that. Because that's the other thing, is you want to know, there's a difference between journalism and blogging. There's going to be a lot of blogging, no matter. We had one applicant from, an out-of-state applicant who was a finalist in a district, and he did something to make his home people mad, because they took it upon themselves to try to tank him in Florida. And that board was inundated with emails and letters and calls, because they, they did not like this guy. So that will happen as well. People, you know, they decide they want to be on a crusade and ruin someone, they're going to do it. And sometimes it's valid and sometimes it's not. I mean, anybody who's in decision-making has to make a decision that not everyone's happy with somewhere along the line. So it's a tough situation to be in and put yourself through. The vetting is, there will always be, there will always be something, always, whatever that might be. When you do interviews, we strongly recommend that you do a public interview with the board and the applicant, similar to this. All applicants would typically get the same questions, so that the community and the board members can compare apples to apples. And then you do sort of a one-on-one for an hour or however long, where you individually talk to the person and see, is this someone I think I can work with? And put the feedback together, as well as you would typically have a public event where community can come in and meet the applicants, get a feel for them, ask them some questions, provide feedback. That's the feedback loop that I gave Brevard this, last night. But you'll do some interviews. Let's talk about costs, because that's something that everybody needs to be aware of. There's a number of costs associated with doing a superintendent search. If you decide to hire consultants, where you're going to advertise and how long, travel, and that's both for consultants as well as for finalists. If you're going to have any receptions, I think the last time we were here, didn't your chamber do something once?
We did.
You did something across the street?
Across the street, Sweetwater.
Yes, that's what it was. That was a lovely location, too. It was, yeah, I do recall that. It was really nice. So receptions, the interviews where you're bringing typically the applicant and usually their significant other to town. And sometimes people include a day of whatever that might be, entertainment, sometimes that is included in it. And then there's a small, for the background checks, to get what you want there. So all those costs. Typically, your consultants are going to be, like, we charge 35,000, others I've seen up to, I think Broward has over 100,000 right now? It depends on who you're using and what you're asking them to do and that sort of thing. So it can, it can be costly. But just so you know about that. After the search, what's important is, the single most important thing is creating those successful conditions. Even if you're outvoted, even if it wasn't your first choice, if this is going to be the superintendent in your district, you have to find a way to help that person be successful. Because otherwise, your own goals as a board member may not get met. I mean, you, I don't think any of you ran to be on the board for four years and not be able to make an influence. So the best way to do that is to create the successful conditions through clear expectations and protocols, setting common goals, and discussing evaluation. You want to do that before you get into a whole year's worth of stuff, and then say, oh, well, we were going to grade you on this, when the person didn't know what they were going to be evaluated on. So you definitely want to talk about the evaluation. You probably have a policy on that, I'm guessing, and you may have some previous samples. But if you're looking to change that, you want to have that conversation in the early months, so that the board and the superintendent agree, this is the process we're going to follow. And it's clear that the superintendent knows, I'm being evaluated on this, 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 and this. Because if superintendent thinks they're being evaluated on these four things, but you're evaluating on these four things, there's a disconnect. And that can create confusion, and board members aren't going to have their goals met, and the superintendent's going to be a failure, not because they wanted to be, but they didn't know what they were being expected to be evaluated on. So that's kind of a general overview. I will say, it does require typically additional meetings by the board pretty regularly to discuss things, move things forward, even things like how you're going to do that reception that we just mentioned, that was over at Sweetwater. You know, here's the plan, do you all agree? Is this work for you? Do you have any suggestions? I think last time when we were working with Alachua, your ed foundation, and I think it was your chamber, provided lunch on different days for the applicants. The chamber, you guys had a bunch of people come in at lunch and meet the applicants, as I recall. So there are outside organizations that you can bring in to help be a part of everything. But what questions can I answer for you? It's a lot, I know. Tina?
Let's start now and see if Ms. McGraw had any questions.
I would just say for today, very good presentation. Key things for me, when you said that about turnaround, I would be looking for a candidate who really understands how to move a district academically, because that is a big key and challenge for this district. And I was a part of the chamber interviews before, so it was, it was, but like you say, and this is something I would take extremely serious, because we don't want to go through processes and waste people's time. And I think that has been done too often in the past. But it is going to be important, because one of the first things a superintendent has to be able to do is build relationships, the morale, that's going to be extremely important. the morale, that's going to be extremely important, but also academic achievement is, is key in being able to deal with the behavior and things. But I think you've given us, and I like your cost, and I think you are familiar. I like the fact that you, as a consultant, you are very familiar, familiar with this district and with us. But right now, we'll continue to take all this in, because I do, I already have type of superintendent I would like to see, but the overall process today has been, has been good. So thank you for your comments today.
So thank you again for coming and presenting. I know your schedule was very tight, and making this happen was not easy, so I appreciate it. I, I kind of want to find out what our next steps are, you know, how we move forward from here. We've heard the presentation. Again, it, this seems like what, what we need as a district. I, I personally, I can't speak for the entire board, but I don't have a person in mind like Ms. McGraw. I have qualities that I know are important. Experience and turnaround is one. Success in project management for big projects is another. But I, I would like to know kind of what our next steps are, if, you know, what, what the board needs to do to move forward with the search.
So in our last meeting, which I should pull out my calendar, but I don't have it out, two weeks ago.
You know that date, Kim?
In that meeting, there was an agenda item where we voted to have this workshop, as well as voting to use FSBA to do our search. And we all agreed to do that. And we all, as part of that, agreed, if I'm recalling correctly, to, that we could go ahead and start that process. So we're at the point where this is kind of twofold, how I, how I saw it, and I'm interpreting it. And what my goal was, is to help all of us who are new, who haven't done it from this point, like, you know, like Ms. McGraw, I participated heavily in the last search, and was on the chamber's committee with that. But doing it as a board member, I hadn't done that. And so we, I felt like I needed the, this instruction and this clarification. I've talked with Andrea, but I felt like all of us needed to kind of come along together. And so I think we are where we are, in that the next steps could be, we would have to examine our job description, and we start, if it's a workshop led with Andrea, deciding upon qualities of our new, that we'd like to have for seeing the applicants, and then we figure out, you know, that, go through that process of what she said, and how long we're going to advertise, and all of that type of stuff, deciding on the timeline. So I don't know if Andrea, since we've only been here for an hour, I'm going to, I'm going to let everybody else speak if they have something, but maybe we consider this, is that since we've only been here for an hour, and we did have a little bit more time allotted, that we could possibly just discuss some other things, like next step, and, and for us to get going. Yes, Mr. Delaney?
I was just going to ask, in, in response to Dr. Rockwell's question, do you recommend that there be someone at the district that you would, or FSBA would kind of directly liaison with? A point person, or is that usually the chair?
Interesting, because I wrote right here, key contact. Because typically, we do have a staff member, I think before it was Rose and Jackie. I remember Jackie doing quite a bit of the work, and I know Rose isn't here anymore, so you might be the lucky one. And then there was a time, you had the interim superintendent that was a female doctor, what was her name?
Hollinger, Hollinger.
What was her name? Yes, Dr. Hollinger. She did a lot of the work when she was the interim. Yeah, Dr. Hollinger, that's exactly who that was. So yeah, we would normally have a key contact. I will say, for our purposes, our agenda is really booked. It doesn't free up until July 1 to do a lot of the, the meetings with the board. The one thing I think we can get done, probably May-June, would be survey the community. That I think we could easily get done, and the results of that survey will then influence the board's discussion on qualities and qualifications. So to me, that's the next step, is maybe we would come up with a tentative timeline. Don't know, you guys would want to kind of give us an idea of a, where do you want the start date, if you, in a dream world? But if not a dream world, then, you know, what's the latest start date, and we can kind of build a tentative timeline from there? But we, we could even start a survey without a timeline, because no matter what, you're going to want to know what the community's input is.
Let me, let me, you know, follow-up question. When you, when you indicated you need a contact from the district, what would be the role of that person, as far as their liaison communication with you? Because I want to make sure this process is not tainted. Because a lot of time, mixed messages get out, things that are not accurate get out, and it's all over the place, and that, that, that is a behavior that needs to change.
So for our purposes, the contact at the school district is, serves a number of different roles. And we actually have a liaison little handbook that we've created, for every step of the way, what that person does, okay? And I can forward that to you as soon as I leave, or actually, before I even leave, I can forward that to you. But in essence, that's typically going to be the person who, for example, just this, last night, when I sent out to the Brevard Board the feedback results, I send it actually to their staff person, Tammy Agary, and then Tammy sends it to the board. So it's the person that's going to get everything to the board, but also, then she, she serves the function of getting it to their IT department, so that it gets linked onto their website. So one of the things we do is we recommend a, we call it a superintendent search portal. So we work with your IT department to have what, what would be called a landing page, if you will. Anybody that's interested in the superintendent search, here's everything associated with it on this page. If you were to go to, go to Brevard, Charlotte, Manatee, Osceola, pick one, or go to all of them, look on their homepage, you'll see some iteration of superintendent search slider, is what they call it. And you can click on it, and you'll see each different district does the superintendent landing page differently, but the staff member has to coordinate with IT to get certain things done. The staff member coordinates with whoever sets up the meeting space, to, to get the meeting space. If there are, at the community survey, the staff member would liaise with probably the, whoever the network person would be that gets communication out to, many times, the staff person wouldn't be the communications person. So the staff person is the point person on everything coming in, going out, including, but not limited to, if there's a board meeting, and let's say we're here to discuss with you, we need your direction on advertisement venues, the final advertisement, we'll come up with a draft, and sample interview schedules, all right? So those are going to be the three things we discuss at a workshop. We would work with the liaison to get those attached to your board meeting. She would bird dog us and say, hey, I didn't get that yet, because for whatever reason, somebody made a change, and we needed to update it. So it's information coming in and going out, but it's not decision-making. Does that clarify?
Right, okay. Just want to make sure, because we just-
Coordinates meals for the interviews, lunches, makes sure that there's, that each board member, when, when we do one-on-one interviews, we need five separate rooms. That person coordinates the HR conference room versus the finance conference room, you know, all of those sort of logistical things, gets signs made if necessary. We, we actually did one search where, now granted, it was during COVID, but they, they were taking the applicants on tours of the district to see different schools. So each of the applicants basically got assigned a school bus, because they needed to physically space, and so that person coordinated the buses and the route and things like that.
And also, I think, as we move through in different workshops that you have, I would like to see what the role is. You can talk more about the role of the chair and the vice chair with the superintendent, but the role of the chair working along with the superintendent, I would like to have some more input on that as well.
There are times when we need some direction from the chair. I'll, I'm going, I keep going to Brevard, because they're farthest in the thing. So I had the protocol written out for tomorrow's meeting, send it to the chair. Are there any corrections that you want to make before I share it with the other board members? He calls me, we discuss, and he said, let's change the order from this to this. We changed it, sends out to the board members. But typically, in a search, I'm trying to think of something that the chair would do that wouldn't be the full board. Typically, the direction comes from the full board in workshops. I might have to get back to you on that. Bill and John may have an example off the top of their heads. My team consists of three people, myself, Dr. Bill Vogel, who's a retired superintendent-
Some districts do things different, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Looking at, just looking at everything, so.
Yeah. We actually have, and I'll forward both of them before I leave today, we have a little, here's a superintendent search, what do you need to know for the board, as well as, if you're the liaison, and it actually has every sort of event along the way. Selection meeting, here's what needs to happen. Superintendent search portal, here's IT's role, here's this person's role, here's that person's role. It's all broken down. I'll send both of those to you before I leave today.
Okay.
Or I'll send it to the liaison to send to you.
Okay.
We'll get our-
Send it to the liaison, that'd be good. I don't know if our liaison would be Ms. Green, I think our liaison would be Ms. Green, because she's the one who supports the board.
Okay, perfect.
Ms. Green.
And that's going to be the liaison book?
That's good, that's good. So I, I stepped out, I'm sorry, I had to run to the ladies' room. Does anyone have anything else? I'm, I'm taking my calendar out, because I'm, I, I, I think we need to look at dates, like, having a search far off, my, my, where, where we left at the Tuesday meeting, where I was in, and I'm going to get the date, because I keep referencing it, and I ain't saying the right date. So on April 18, yeah, seems so far ago, but in April 18's meeting, we said we wanted to go forth, like, immediately to get started, right? Do y'all, do y'all agree with that? That we, on the 18th, we said we wanted to go forward with our, we wanted to get started with our search immediately, is, you know, when we voted on the 18th, right? And so Andrea, I'm wanting to, like, kind of lean in on you to, for us to, like, start working. I know your, your plate, your bucket is full, but if there, I want us to figure out a way to start our survey, or whatever steps we can immediately start to do, as soon as we can start to do them, that we start to work.
So let me ask you this, with regard to the survey, okay? I can give you some samples of some surveys. Do you want the board to approve the survey before it goes out? Or do you have your communications team, or is there a staff member here that does surveying, and that person can approve the survey before it goes out? I need to know that, because that's, that's going to be important on the next step.
I, I have a quick question. I know we have, Ms. Johnson, you might need to grab a mic. We have an important survey that's out right now, that I know Ms. Johnson was concerned with having additional surveys at the same time. When does that close, Ms. Johnson?
The date for the family and staff surveys, that closes May 12. I am still waiting to hear back from the county, because as you recall, at one of the last workshops, you had asked us to help the county with its technology survey. I am still waiting to hear back from them, how, how that will go, so, and what their timeline looks like. But our family survey, it closes out the end of the day, May 12.
I think additionally to, just in thinking about all the surveys, we were already looking at the complexity of having different surveys going out in the same time period in the summer, because of strategic planning. And so is there a potential way of being able to add questions for the same population or group in one of those surveys? But just considering that, so that families aren't getting multiple surveys back to back.
And that was my concern, and I was going to ask you as well. We're in the middle of some heavy, you know, strategic planning, comprehensive zoning. What is your recommendation as looking for a superintendent? I mean, I know we want to move forward, but you know, I don't want to knock the door now, I want to move forward, but I'm not in extreme, extreme, you know, dire hurry.
So what?
Because we're in the middle of rezoning. I'm just saying, as we're doing this, somebody's coming in, they're going to be looking at how we're moving in some of these issues we're already dealing with. So I just kind of want to know your opinion, because rezoning is heavy.
All right, so being perfectly frank with you, because that's what you pay me to do. If you can get the rezoning done, before the next superintendent comes in, remember when I had the slide up there that talked about creating conditions, creating successful conditions? If you do not have the rezoning done, and the new person comes in, and rezoning, nobody's ever happy fully with rezoning, then you're putting your new person that you put in here in a situation where they're already going to make people mad. And that's going to undermine the success of whoever you bring in. So in an ideal world, the tough rezoning will already have happened, and the new person comes in, the zones are set, people are already mad, but it wasn't that person who did the zoning, or won't be pointed as the person who did the zoning.
Yeah, because we're in the middle of strategic planning, it's just beginning, so all of that, and that's, that's why I asked that.
Yeah, strategic planning doesn't have the same negative response from people, so I could go either way on that. I think ideally, a new superintendent would probably want to-
Lead the, lead the strategic plan, because that's also a way for them to get to learn-
I was going to say, that, that way they hear and connect with the community during that, so.
That's why I asked you about comprehensive zoning first, but also strategic planning, I can understand they want, wanted to be a part of that.
Yeah.
So that, that was why I've kind of, remember McGraw, that was why I was suggesting that we really go on to do the rezoning, because it is the hot potato that's been avoided for so many years. And so, and I knew a new leader, it would be almost setting them up, like, putting a land- Well, you know, yeah, we're moving forward. I don't, I don't, I don't doubt that, but there is something to be said for a spot, because it, it conditions people for the big change and all, but yeah, we are. I'm just, I'm just commenting on what you, what you brought up, and so I think we, we have that. Do you have something, Sarah?
Mr. Delaney did.
Okay. I was just going to add that a robust strategic planning process is done annually. So if there was a new superintendent that came in, they would, in short order, be able to participate in the, the next one.
And, and I just wanted to add a couple of things, just because what you just said is right, and that, that should be done annually, because you should be looking at data to see where, where, yeah, what we, what we're, what the state we're in, and change that annually. A strategic plan that's just dormant is worthless. But also, the board hires the superintendent, and so for me, Ms. Green is amazing as a liaison, but if anybody else is added to that, it should be a board decision. And any important decisions that are made with regards to superintendent should be made with the whole board.
And I just wanted to clarify, Ms. Johnson might be able to answer, I, I was under the impression that our timeline for the strategic plan was like eight months to a year, that it's not going to be done quickly.
Right, those were the recommendations, but just as we're talking about other timelines, you know, it all depends on when we get started, how robust we want the work to be done, and staff availability and time with all of the projects, and things that they are balancing at this time.
Dr. McNeely, did you speak while I, when I stepped out? Come on. I, I need, we need your input, we, I want your input. Okay, all right.
To, if I could speak to Ms. Edwards here, I, I heard your concern about the surveys. So did I understand you to say that you would maybe want questions from this survey added to another survey, in which case we would want a smaller, less comprehensive survey? I just want to make sure I understand.
Not a specific thing for me, I think that my, I just wanted to bring up that we have multiple surveys that we're already looking at, and there have been concerns with staff prior to looking at this particular survey about sending out multiple surveys to families or community members, and seeing how we could do that best. Should they be combined? Should we look at specific dates? We just don't want to inundate our community with lots of surveys, so if we can capture it, maybe all in the, within the same survey? Not really sure. I don't have a, a commitment one way or the other, I guess. I just want to make sure that we're considering it all.
Because I do, I do have a thought, based on what you said. We could start with a targeted survey-
We could start with a targeted survey. And by targeted, I mean, for lack of a better term, think of key communicators, people that each of you trust, and each of you find, provides a broad spectrum of, of information. Maybe your superintendent has a database right now of key communicators, I, I don't know, maybe Jackie does, I, I don't know. But, you could start with a targeted survey, which could then help drive the qualities and qualifications for the board, and then, in the fall, when, when school is starting, at the beginning of the school year, you could do additional feedback that can help you as you're getting closer to making a decision. That's, that's another option to consider. If you, if you, there was one district that had a very targeted database, and they kept that survey information different from the community, it ended up being almost identical, but we did need the district to send out the survey through their communicator, they didn't want to release the email contacts, is really what I'm getting at. They, they had this curated list that they used for a number of things, and they weren't comfortable giving that to us, which I fully understand, so then I just provide the QR code, or the embed link, or whatever, to whoever, and that's the kind of thing that the liaison would work with, if, if you have that list already curated in any way, many districts do, we could do that, or you could do it through, maybe the Ed Foundation has a curated list, you know, there are some targeted groups that you might want to consider for, a, a, early feedback to get you started.
And the, the question I was going to ask you, said that you had, like, a survey question bank, I guess, for lack of a better term, that you would have that, or you wanted to see survey questions from our person who could create surveys? Do you have anything that you could kind of, like, share with us, that we could kind of, like, like, see what the nature of them are?
For sure, I can give you, we have some, some districts want very, very specific questions asked, I'll, I'll use Pinellas as an example, they had some very, very specific questions they wanted asked, where they actually had, and they selected, I think, maybe 20 adjectives, and they wanted the people to prioritize those 20 adjectives, okay? Or pick five, and then of, by people picking five, they were able to find the top adjectives. Other districts have more general stuff, some districts, like Orange County was very, very specific, we asked questions, they wanted questions specifically related to their strategic plan, but even at the time, I said, most community members aren't as connected with the strategic plan of the school district as internal people are, so it didn't get them really the information that they thought they were going to get. The general questions are better, so I've got several different samples. I can send you maybe two general samples, and if board members send to me, maybe we can decide 10, that they, 10 questions that they like, or however you want to do it, then I can compile a draft of sorts that we can then work through to get to something, and I don't know if you want to do it with a curated receipt list first, or public, or, I, I don't know how you want to do that, but with the other surveys, I do recognize the challenge and the competing interests.
But I still, because this is so important, I still would want them mixed with something else. I, I still think that this needs to be something that's separate, separate, because this is going to be important to the entire district, and to the community, so I wouldn't want to see it together, but if you could provide, as Chair Surtin said, some samples, that would be, that would be great, so we can look.
So, when is your next workshop? Because maybe I can get you some samples, and then at the next workshop, we can discuss the survey.
Wednesday.
Of this week?
Third, yeah, May 3rd.
What time?
1 o'clock. 10, we have a 10, start at 10. You're, you're on the road again.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, what, what's the workshop after that? I mean, I can give them to you, and you guys can discuss them, and kind of, then.
You can provide them. Yeah, if you do that, we can.
For sure.
We can have a discussion at the end of our workshop. Is that legal, Mr. Delaney? Okay, I thought it was, but I wasn't sure, I just want to make sure.
Sure, the board could discuss the survey questions, and then have it on the agenda for the 16th to fully approve.
Right. Right, you can talk about it, but you can't necessarily, which gives us a little back-and-forth time. So, if at, if at Wednesday's meeting you guys discussed it, you could give the chair direction on, to tell me what to do, to come up with a better draft, or pull, part from this one and part from this one, then I can pull it together, get you a draft that you could vote on by the 16th.
I just wanted to agree with Ms. McGraw, I think the superintendent search is probably going to be the most important thing this board does, and I don't want it mixed with other surveys, I want it to have its own, own survey.
I agree with that, too.
Andrea, when we did the search with FSBA, did we not have, it seems to me, we had the different groups that met, they gave us their recommendations, and we didn't go with them, so is that a necessity, or?
No, ma'am. That was something unique that you all had done, which worked well for you at the time. We've not seen anybody else do what you guys did, and I'll describe it to them for those people who weren't here, but on the day of, I think it was the board interview day, so one board mem, one applicant was here interviewing with the board, the other applicants had 30 minutes.
With each.
In, in, I think you had your PTA, maybe your teachers' union.
And there were, there were.
Ed Foundation, do you remember the groups that were there?
Yeah, I've got my schedule.
Oh, there you go. Oh, you know what? I probably could.
Jackie went and pulled her schedule, because she's like, oh, this is going to come up, huh?
One of my emails, we actually had, each candidate was in town for three days, the first day they came, they were set up with a host from the district, who picked them up, took them on a tour of various schools, same schools for each candidate, and then would tour them around district sites, then they had the luncheon over at the Chamber, sponsored by the Chamber, and then that evening, we had the reception for all of them, the community meeting. The next two days were basically divided up into a group meeting with the entire board, meetings one-on-one with individual board members, and then we had four groups, the DAC, ACCPTA, ACEA, and ASEC, the Galatrick County Education Committee, and they all had individual periods with the board members, they had a template form that they filled out, it was, they weren't ranking, they weren't selecting, but they were giving input, which was then submitted to the, to the board. So, that took place over about two and a half, three, three days.
Your question is, is that required? No. It's whatever the board wants and prioritizes, but I do want to pick up on something Ms. Johnson said, and that is, no matter anyone's role throughout, the board is who makes this decision, decision statutorily, so you cannot absolve yourselves of making that decision. That doesn't mean people can't advise you, but they don't make decisions for you, and we are very clear, anytime there's any groups like that, and even with the board, we never ask or recommend that the board prioritize or rank order, because then what we see is game playing. I'll give this person a zero, because they're the top competition for the person I want, and I'll give my person a 10, and then suddenly the scores are skewed, and it's just game playing, and we just don't need it. So, we try very hard to, as I said, keep your pool open as wide as you can, as long as you can, keep your mind open, because ideally, you want someone that all board members can work with, and the person that you, or you, or you, whoever wants, may not be that person, so you want it, for the district to move forward, we have to have healthy, positive relationships across the board. Thank you for those details, I could have pulled that, as soon as you said it, I was like, oh, I bet I have that on my computer.
Tony Delaney?
Sure, if you could just maybe give the board some feedback, I don't know how typical that would be, to have four or five community groups doing their own interviews of candidates, is that something that's typically done in searches around the state? Is there a risk that you're going to lose board members, excuse me, you're going to lose candidates by having them sort of answering to these other groups?
I think when they did it before, we were at a different time, I think this, you run the same risk as, as I've seen in some other districts, where, why is that group the group that gets to have input, and not another group? And I think that that can, can really create some animosity that you may not, you, you thought you were inclusive, but the reality is, you cannot these days include everyone, and if you include one group, then you, you will be under criticism for some of the others. So, I think it would be a challenge, if it's a priority of the board, we'll find a way to make it work, but I don't want you to think it'll be smooth without at least a little warning.
It's not a priority for me, I don't know about my colleagues, but, because it wasn't a positive experience for me the last time, even though I went through it. I participated, I didn't. It was a waste of time, that's what I'm saying, you want to avoid the perception, it was a waste of time, because the board already knew who they wanted, so I'm just, I'm just being honest. So, if you have it very open for community input, where everybody can come and speak, it's been open to everybody.
I think that the, like, the event, the reception that you all had across the street, if properly promoted, can get you the same information.
Very nice.
And back then, and what year would that have been?
2016.
16?
15.
Okay, it's a while ago. We had, we had people filling out little pieces of paper, and they may or may not have filled it out as they were walking out. Now, we give them a QR code, and they can go home and do it online, or do it on their phone before they even go, and it, we, we get a lot more response than we've ever gotten with the paper, and then we had to photocopy the papers and send it to the board, so, you know, we, we've come a long way since COVID, in many of our processes, for sure.
In case somebody who doesn't have, who doesn't like.
You know what? I'm going to tell you a story, we don't, but we could. But John Reinkert was telling me, he was in Brevard last week, I was out of state, but he was there, and he said, Andrea, I got to tell you, I helped a 90-year-old woman, she didn't know what to do, so he said, well, here, take my phone, because we can help people, and we have our own, like, I bring my iPad, my phone, to, to help people, and he said, he kind of clicked on it, and the woman said, I just write my comment right there, and he said, yes, ma'am, that's what you do, and she said, gosh, I'm so proud, and she asked him to take a picture of her doing it, because she was so proud, so we, we help them, we help move them along. But we can provide paper, sure.
Anyone else? Any other concerns? Okay, so, I'll look for the survey from you, we'll discuss it at our next workshop, we will vote on it on 15th, get that back to you for the 15th, then what?
Okay, so first off.
Timeline, yes.
I want to confirm, did you say?
16. Tuesday, the 16th is our, we, next meeting, yeah.
Let me ask this, I just want to be clear. The key contact is going to be?
Ms. Green, Kim Green.
Lucky day. All right, so Ms. Green, and then, when, I'm going to send you three things. I'm going to send you the liaison manual that we give, Ms. Green's going to need it and want it herself, it's a digital version, you can print it out if you want, but it will give you every step of the way, all the stuff, and it will also provide for you specifically resources, names of people who've done it in other districts, if you want, it's got samples of, all, you know, advertisements, samples of minutes from workshops, all kinds of stuff in there. I'm also going to send you the board, a little kind of guiding manual, and then I'm also going to send you, I put down two to three sample surveys, because I don't want to overwhelm you, then if you guys will talk about the surveys, get that information to me, I'll update the draft, get it back to you by the 16th, so you can vote on it, but then, would Ms. Green be the one to communicate with IT to get that? I just want to be clear.
I think in, in the, right now, where we'll start, that's where we, she will be our point, your point of contact for us, and if that changes in a side of that, then she and Ms. Peck and Superintendent Andrew will figure it out, but let's start with her.
Okay, so I'm going to start, so your question is, what's next? I'm going to start with Ms. Green, I'm going to get, we have sort of a checklist to give to IT for the portal, that'll be the first thing, they're going to want to get the portal started, so that when the survey does become available, the link will be on that portal. So, I'll work with Ms. Green to get the portal started, we'll get the survey moving, and then I need to work with Bill and John to come up with some sort of a tentative timeline. Do you have, is there agreement on the board? And maybe today's not the day, maybe the 16th you guys decide, but we need to know what your goal start date is, so we can work back and create a timeline for you.
When you say start date, search start date or superintendent start date?
Superintendent start date, because we got to back into everything from there.
Yeah, let's talk about it today. Yes, let's do it today. Well, we're supposed to implement, I guess, rezoning by August 23, I mean, 24, 25 school year, so. But the actual law, rule, rulemaking will be done before then, it's just the, the rulemaking will be done.
The rulemaking, I think the last meeting is November 7th, for the second read, so.
So, the lines will be drawn, like, in the hall, so I don't know if that, that time could be our transitioning time for a new, new person, or whatever, but.
So, give me that date again?
November 7th is the second reading for the rezoning.
So, if that's the case, that could, you could start the transition, do you want to say maybe the board would make a decision, or have the contract approved by October 30?
That's what I was going to suggest, that's ambitious, but yeah. Yes.
That sounds fantastic.
Yes, ma'am, 2023. That's what I understood, but.
Just for Ms. Messina's sake, the zoning maps are going to be disclosed in August, and then the board would be, the district would be going through the rulemaking process going forth, but the community's going to be aware of the, the overall concept by September 1.
I still think October 30 is a clearer, kind of, and it gives you a little bit more time to, for us, it gives time for us to really look at the schedule. We could say no later than October 30, and would you say that that would be the superintendent start date, the board decision date, or the contract approval date?
Start date of this year?
Pardon?
The start date of this year? Yes.
That's what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to respond to what you all want.
Start date, she, she's asking if it's.
It could be January 1, it could be.
October 31st of 2023.
June 30 next year, I mean, what are you?
We're trying to figure out, we'd be done with that, yeah. That's what, that's the question on the floor, she, Andrea's asking, would we want the start date to be October 31st of 2023, or do we want to say we're done with contract negotiations then, and then we have a start date in the future, or what?
Do you want to start second semester, January 1, I mean?
Or what? So, what, you have your calendar out there, what's your, our senior, senior board?
Apparently, we're starting the search, then if the completion date is Octo, no later than October 30th, 2023, is that, am I saying that correct?
Correct, yeah, that's what we just discussed.
All right, so you must be planning on at least July, or June?
Wait, I'm, so we, right now, what we've decided is that Andrea's going to, we're starting the search, so she's going to give us a survey.
Right.
We're going to discuss it on Wednesday, get that back to her, and then she and her team are going to come up with a tentative timeline for us, but.
But I can't do that until I know.
Till we know what, what date we want the new superintendent to start, like, what we want to conclude, and so, it was brought out that the maps for the rezoning would be, the second reading is November 7th, 2023. So, a tentative date was floated, thrown out, suggested just now, of Oc, October 30th, I think she said, and I, October 30th or 31st.
Could be November, I mean, I just threw that.
For, like, for us to have the contract negotiated, or she was asking, did we want this person to start that day? So, that was what, that's what the question is, do we, October 31st, you want that to be the start date? So, Dr. McNeely wants to, is saying we're done with the search, contract negotiated, and we have someone on deck to transition.
And, and, Madam Chair, the reason I'm saying that, because the rezoning is not, I mean, I know we have certain dates and, and everything, but believe me, it's not going to be ended unless we.
But we be through, that's what I.
It's not going to be over, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be over.
Beg your pardon?
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, I don't think it's going to be over.
No, not with our community, not with. No, not with our community, not what we've done before.
Well, I can't go back, I can't keep living with what we didn't do before or what, how things happened.
But is that enough time, you think, for us to, for somebody to start?
And I heard what Andrea said, that you don't want the new superintendent to have that rezoning on top of them.
Right.
So Dr. McNeely, we are going through, and, and colleague McGraw, we're going through this process.
Right.
And the rulemaking, we have, there, I mean, once we, we start the rulemaking process, we have to be done within a time, or you start all over again.
All right.
So I think for us, we're, if we're saying we're going to do the work, we have our dates set in our calendar, and we engage, we're doing things, the staff has the work that they have to do, and it's incumbent upon the board to give feedback and to give direction at our critical juncture points. And then we, you know, it comes up, and the second reading, we're done. So if, if we.
I like what you're saying, and I agree with you. Let's go for it.
Okay.
Um, I have one question, and this is for Mr. Delaney. If we need to review this, the job description, does that need to go through the full, that needs to go through the full rulemaking?
Yes.
So we would need time to have a workshop on that?
Wait a minute, your, your job descriptions go through rulemaking? Every job description has to do that, really?
Yes, ever since I've been here, yes. Even new ones.
Do we have to do that? We don't have to keep doing things.
Not criticizing, I just hadn't heard that before.
Okay.
And Mr. Shelnut reminded me that we do not currently have a job description for superintendent.
I actually, I was looking for it earlier, and I didn't see it, and I thought.
I looked through the, wait a minute.
A lot of people don't, a lot of people don't, because it's pretty clear in statute.
Right.
You have statute and a contract, so it's not always in a job.
Okay, so do we need to have a job description for that, or can we?
We come with qualifications.
Okay, that's, that's what I needed to know, because I needed to know if we had a timeline that allowed us to do what we needed to do there.
I feel like we have a lot going on. We're doing rezoning, we're doing a strategic plan, both of which need a lot of time and effort put into them to be done well. And I, I think at the very earliest, and this is like really, really early, we should not be doing anything before January first of next year. I, I just would like to get some things settled a little bit before bringing in someone new.
Well, I, I disagree, because we have, we have a lot going, and I think the managing of a lot going, we need the right person at the helm to manage those things, and I think we're suffering and kind of limping along because we don't have good leadership to manage large projects, so that's my view.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think that, you know, rezoning is the one thing that we need to get done on this specific timeline. Strategic planning has a much longer timeline, and I personally feel like the sooner we can get the, a permanent superintendent who has been vetted through a full search process in, the more likely we are to have a really robust strategic planning document. And so I think it is important to get that person in, and, you know, I agree with Ms. Sirdan and Dr. McNeely about the October thirty-first kind of timeline.
The superintendent, go to the mic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm just asking for clarification, that person would start October thirtieth of this year?
So, I mean, that's a goal, that's the goal.
That would be a goal.
That's a goal, that's not like etched in stone, like our rulemaking process, where we got ninety days out, but that is what.
Yes, ma'am, but I'm talking, I'm referencing the, having them come in successfully, because if we backtrack, wouldn't that person be going through interviews and all that stuff still during the super, not the super, but during the rezoning? So they would still be in the midst of some of the, I don't want to say ugly, but the controversy? Wouldn't that person still be in the midst of some of that?
You know, you bring up a good question, because what I will tell you is, when we do the community input, that's all the questions they're going to get. It's going to be all about rezoning.
Right.
That, but that's also whoever starts, they're going to be dealing with that when they first come in as well, so. I'm sorry, Dr. McNeely, were you trying to say something? I heard a voice. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I just think they're going to be in the middle of all of that, that's why I don't agree with October thirty. And also, the comment was made, everybody gets a paycheck, even whoever comes in, I want to make this clear. Regardless of who's superintendent, the problem is, the people around him got to be able to do their job too. And some of our departments, right now, that's why I talked to you about making sure that person really, truly understands the academic achievement. You're the superintendent, just like me with my own company. If I'm paying you, I couldn't do the things that I do if the people around me don't do their job. Everybody gets a paycheck. And so we can't sit here and continue to blame every single thing on the superintendent. What has to happen, especially when the one we have now has only been here since March eighteen, twenty twenty-two, so what has to happen, we need to make sure, that's what I'm saying. Whoever comes in this position, he or she, they're going to have to be able, and that's why I think we need somebody outside. They're going to have to make sure that they're not afraid to make tough decisions, that's going to be important. Regardless of who's friends, who knows each other, we got to get back to student focus. That is the problem in this district. We're not student focused. People are worried, they're worried about their jobs, and so children continue to suffer. They continue to suffer. And so when we're looking at this, we want to, you know, rush, and we got all this stuff going on. That's why staff feels sometimes they're all over the place, because we got rezoning, we got strategic planning, we got behavior issues, we got transportation issues. Now we're adding superintendent, and we're trying to push this so fast to get in here by October thirty, twenty twenty-three. I think, well, I'll vote how I'm going to vote, but I believe January would be better as well. Thank you.
And I just want to add too, that there, like Ms. McGraw said, there are so many unstable things in this district right now. If I were a prospective candidate coming in, and I looked at the chaos that is everywhere, it would not, it would not, I, I would think I would have a huge challenge ahead of me. And so I, to me, it, do we need a, a permanent superintendent? Yeah, of course we do. But we also need someone that comes in that's gonna be able to, to handle, to run the district as if it's a normal running district. You know, like, you know, a district that's, that's on autopilot, that doesn't happen all the time, but we're, we're so far from autopilot that, you know, a superintendent has to be able to come in and, and manage what's there, not go back and fix transportation and fix, fix, you know, all the other issues that we have in this district. And I think that we need, and we are working on that, because we're working on a strategic plan, we're working on rezoning, and hopefully some other issues are going to be tackled. But this is not a very stable district, and I don't think it would be, if I were looking for a job and I had a choice between a district, one that might pay more, and also one that had things that were functioning at a higher level, I'd be much more inclined to go to that district. And so I just wonder, like, the quality of the candidates we're going to get. Plus, you throw in the fact that we change superintendents like we change our underwear, and there you go. I wouldn't feel secure.
Well, and there is a tenor in Florida with superintendents that is very unstable right now. I mean, a lot of people have expressed to me concern about being a superintendent today because there's a lot of turnover on that. I'm, I'm not going to say that there's not. I, I hear we're trying to get to a date. Tina, I see you.
Yeah, so I, I kind of, as my colleagues have expressed what they feel, and I respect what they each say, I throw out, I am for moving forward with finding a little, a new leader, because the right leader can help lead you through times of turbulence and, and times of, I, I allowed you to speak, and I didn't interrupt you, so I ask for the same courtesy. So I, I think that we have a lot of challenges that we're dealing with, and waiting around and expecting the person that we have to fix them, when over the past year, I don't think that leadership has been there to direct the staff. I agree with you, everyone gets a paycheck, and they should do their job. And, but a lot of times, what I have seen, what I've experienced, is folks will be hesitant to move if they're not getting direction, or they're not being told what that vision is. Like, like, what, one thing, I'm going to go back to Dr. Roberts. Dr. Roberts came in with a ninety-day plan and a hundred eighty-day plan, and he set the tenor, and he, 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 for how he wanted the district to go, and he set clear expectations. He didn't, I don't think, I don't, I don't even think he got that from the board. He said it himself as to where he wanted to see the district go, and he provided that leadership. And he had this person, I, I'm going to tell you to do this, he, he had a vision in mind of where he wanted the district to go, improving student achievement, literacy, robotics, STEM, that whole thing, you know, shoot, I think it was shoot to the moon or something like that. He was able, he was a true leader in the sense of being able to know what it takes to drive organization change. I don't think we have that. And so I think sitting around waiting for it to happen, I, I just, and I, I'm trying not to like, not, not argue, because Andrea can't, can't do that for us. We have to decide that amongst the board, amongst us five members, and she's just here as a liaison to tell us about the search. But I just, like, there's a lot that's been said, and I, I don't really, I mean, like I said, I respect you guys, your, your opinion and what you feel, but I just feel that if we, by waiting, we've, we've lost a year of time and not had any, any, any measurable or any true progress, in my view, towards goals. Like, in October, we had our board orientation, and the three of, the five of us, we agreed upon three things in that meeting. We, when we came out of that meeting, we said we wanted to work to the staff and our superintendent, to direct the staff to work on improving student achievement, third grade reading scores, you know, everybody making up learning gains, that, we, we agreed upon that, we agreed upon rezoning, and we knew we needed a strategic plan. And from, from that point up until February seventh, I think it was, we saw no evidence of anything like that happening. And I used board policy to direct the superintendent to do that. I just saw, to me, if we just keep waiting around, the children aren't going to benefit. They're not, they're, we're not going to have people doing their job, we're not going to have a leader challenging people who are collecting a paycheck to do their job. And yet, we have behavior issues. We do, and they've been out, and we've been expecting a plan and a thing, all that framework and all that for over a year. We haven't seen it before you guys came on, so I'm frustrated like y'all. But, you know, the board has given that direction, so we can either sit around and stay the course with the person we have to say, oh, we're going to let him fix it, and then we bring somebody else new in, man, we'll be, people going to run us out of Watchwe County.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with some of the things that you're saying, but the problem is, he just got here March eighteenth of twenty twenty-two. The problems, anybody comes in this district, what I'm saying to you, they're going to inherit the same district staff that, that the current superintendent has, and, and your achievement. For, you know this, because you ran on data. Ten years, the data has not moved. The last time you've had some success, Carl Hutchison and Dr. Barnes was at Lake Forest. Ms. Quatero was at Metcalfe, D to B, these people. She needs to understand what she's dealing with when she comes in here as, as a consultant. And so I'm glad we're having this conversation, because conflict, good conversations are good. And so to blame the one person in there, anybody who comes in is going to inherit all these people in this district, and as somebody who's been involved since twenty twenty, I mean nineteen ninety-two, this has not changed. And so the reason I'm frustrated, because there are children who are failing. There are children who are failing. But to say that one person has caused all of this, not going to sit here and agree with that, because I have to lay to sleep at night. But what I'm saying is, every one point five years, we have moved, just like when, when the co, community comment was made, when Mr., when, when Mr. Rawls was at the last board meeting. Two and a half years, we've had three superintendents. What that shows anybody, before I come in here, is that we're unstable. And so that has, and, and the problem is, when somebody gets ready to make a change before somebody can even put something in place, it's all across the county. That's the, that's a problem.
Wait a minute, what do you mean? You're talking about, you're talking about info?
Stuff goes out. Whatever somebody, a leadership, but if you undermine me, I'm not going to give you a plan, I'm not going to do anything I do until I know what my state, my state of me, what I'm going to be. I'm not going to give you nothing until, because you're, you're, you got to think he's new. We came in, November, December was a wash. January to, 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 April, we've been trying to work on things. We all took on something for our own strategic visioning, because we could not wait on the strategic planning. But where we are now, we're all over the place. And so at this point, I get what you're saying, because some of you are, you and Dr. McNeely have served longer. I know when I was here in twenty twenty, serving, we had the same problems. I know as a volunteer in this school system, we've had the same problems since nineteen ninety-two. And so I'm saying, I'm not saying we don't move forward, I just said, I agree with starting January of twenty twenty-four instead of October, that's all I'm saying. We all got the same problems, but we must also, I'm, I'm going to, I'm not going to sit here, and I'm going to make my, make sure my conscience is clear to not blame. It takes a concerted effort. If I am the superintendent, and I give you a job to do, stop asking me for board direction when you're getting paid a hundred and some thousand dollars, you're getting paid ninety some thousand dollars. Give me a plan. That's not what our job is. Like you said, we governance. But we have done a good job, I would say, through our strategic visioning, of giving examples and solutions. That's not our job. The people, and he's one person, so with him being one person, the people in the district, they need to be able to do their job. That's what you get paid for. Not personal, love everybody in here, not personal, but be able to perform. Because if you're telling me that you say Dr. Roberts, we go back to Dr. Roberts, that's the last time I've seen some results, just like with ABC Report. That talks about the fast test. I don't want to see any more of that ABC Report. I want to see what illuminate doing. I want to see the real data.
I want to see what illuminate and ABC, because ABC is outlining things that need to be done.
That tells it all. But I just wanted to make sure that I make my note, my, my thoughts clear on where we are, but we sit here, we can't, and like you said, we got to be able to work together. We got to be able to move forward as a district, but I'm not saying you sit here, because when you, when you made the motion to put Mr. Andrew in there back last year, we knew what his challenges, and we knew what his strengths were. All I'm saying is, don't sit here and try to destroy a person and talk about what they failed to do over and over again when they inherited a lot of.
I, I think you misunderstood, mis, misinterpreted.
All I'm saying is, that's how I feel.
I, I, and I, I received that.
Board members have gotten calls after calls after calls about this process, and I'm out of town, trying to enjoy myself, and I'm continuing to get the same calls about nothing, because people get stuff misconstrued, as I said earlier, and it gets all over, and it gets in the paper, and it's the wrong message that we continue to send. All I'm saying is, I'm not saying we don't move forward, but I'm saying, let's not sit here and try to destroy someone.
Okay, so your point is well taken. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I'm not trying, I'm not trying, I'm not blaming anybody, but I think for me, Ms. McGraw, so you, so I, I don't want to like get in a back and forth with you, right? But the point of the matter is, the superintendent gets the vision from the, from the board members, right? And the sup, and, and the superintendent has to direct the staff.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And then he has to hold them accountable, if they don't, if they don't do it. But that does not come, if, if he doesn't direct them, and if he doesn't, if, if he sits around and he tries, he or she, whoever we bring in here, and they don't, they don't push down a vision of how they want, or have, bring a team together and build a team, because the next person that comes in is going to inherit staff. They can't clean house.
They're going to inherit, you can't clean house.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm, no, 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 when I say clean house, meaning get rid of everybody.
I'm not saying you get rid of everybody.
But that's up for the superintendent to do that.
And keep it real. Skill, will, and keep it real.
I, I can, I can agree with you on that, and there's.
It, it's time for a change, and the problem is, every time it's time for a change, the problem is, every time there's time to change, we start pointing finger, fingers and trying to destroy people. Mr. Delaney? Mr. Delaney?
I think you're misconstruing what I'm, I'm not destroying anybody.
Over and over again, that we have got to stop. It's time for a change. I'm tired of it.
So I think, and you're 20% of that, of the board, and 20% don't, like, do that. So, you know, I think all of us have our own frustrations, and I think to misconstrue my comments as trying to destroy someone.
I didn't try to misconstrue, you said, I told you, we both agree. I had my comments, and I said that I wanted to start in October. I'm not disagreeing with some of the thing. What I'm saying is, we have to be careful when we start embarrassing people and trying to destroy people in public. That is what, and I'm not saying maybe specifically you, it's that when we, what I'm saying to you, is when we are sharing information, just like she just told us about a liaison, Ms. Green would be a liaison. So Ms. Green knows not to go all over and start sharing stuff that you've not been asked to share yet, that may not be publicly. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so I'm not sure where that came from, but I do want you to understand, I do want you to understand that there's one of those slides over there that says there's sunshine, and everything we do, from the point it's done, is public information. That's the first thing. And also, the sharing of information don't all necessarily come from board members or from staff, from this staff, because I, because let me tell you something. I had a person call, I'm just gonna tell you, because I have to tell you this right now. Somebody called me and told me something that I know was not one of us, because it wasn't public, right? And you know who it was? It could have been Ms. Green, Ms. Peck, or Mr. Andrew, or us, because we were the only ones on the email.
They received it.
Right?
Correct.
You guys get the board member email, right?
The attorney received it.
Attorney, them, Mr. Andrew, and us.
Correct, and that's what I was speaking of.
Right, so if we, if we didn't tell it, it was somebody, had to be one of those things right there.
Somebody.
Who had to disclose it. So I don't, I'm not running scared, because I didn't say...
All I'm saying is, when you do that, you undermine people. We can disagree, we're not gonna always agree, and that's okay. But what I'm saying is, we have to be careful when this continues to happen, because we're taking ourselves off of being student focused, and it goes back to the adults.
I can agree with you on that, and there is a certain amount of confidentiality that one would hope, but we also have to realize that professionalism, confidentiality, but there really is no confidentiality in whatever we do, once it gets an email, or there's a document that circulated amongst staff, we have no expectation of privacy, because that chapter 119, like he just said, my husband tells me I need to be careful about the notes I take, because people can ask for these.
They can have them.
So, I'm just saying, like, that's, so when people, when things get out and they get in the paper, that is, that is what could happen, because we're elected officials and the things that this...
All I'm saying is, we have to learn to, we know this stuff becomes public record, I know all of that, about the rules and all of it.
And this is why our district's a mess. It's why it's...
No, no, Ms. Abbott, I disagree, because as board members, we have to learn, and we have to talk and discuss things, because this is the only forum we can do that in, right? And we're working, Dr. McNeil and I disagree regularly in meetings, and I love her dearly, and I respect her wisdom, and I respect Ms. McGraw, I think she respects me, I respect you, I hope you respect me, I think Dr. Rockwell. But we have to learn, it can't be just a rubber stamp.
I'm not talking about the disagreement, I'm talking about the fact that, that something like the self-assessment got out somehow, and that, you know, I get a call, like, you know, only seven people knew about it, well, I sure didn't send it out, but it looks like, you know, I'm one of the ones the light's on now, and I don't like that. And so, you know, to be honest, and when I got the phone call, I said, well, I can't even imagine one of the board members doing that.
Right.
Because I don't, that's just not, you know, even though we don't disagree, we don't agree on some things, I think we all have very high ethical standards, and I don't think that would happen. I can't imagine either of those two ladies ever doing that. And so where did it come from?
And that's hurt feelings when those things happen.
I had that question too.
All these rumors get spread all around, and then, you know, social media goes crazy, and it's just, and so the issue is about all those little kids at Rawlings that have a substitute teacher just blows by the, you know, it's just flying up there in air somewhere, and we're focusing on these, on this stupid stuff.
Andrea, although you are here to help us with the search, I'm gonna ask, does FSVA, who do you have on staff that can give us a retreat for unification for my board? We need that. Tina has done an excellent job bringing in the new members and all of the meetings that we've had. But you can see that I want this board, before I say goodbye, to be unified, and we, and as Tina said, we can all disagree, and that's for us to be able to do, but we don't have enough time where we can actually talk among each other because of the laws. And so it's cost money every time we notice a meeting where we can get together. But I'm here suggesting that we have more noticed opportunities, other than executive board, because that can't get out. But we need to have this opportunity to square up and explain, and for Kay to understand how I feel, and Sarah to understand what I'm saying is valid, or whatever. I just know that we need that in order to function.
And you guys signed up for Master Board, didn't you?
We have, well, we have that on the 28th.
Yeah, we have it.
I think it's Carol Cook and Paula Wright, well, her last name's not Wright anymore, because she got married. What is it? Carol Cook and Paula, it used to be Wright, she got married, I'm sorry, I don't know her new last name. So you actually, I'll have two people come into work with you, Carol's from Pinellas, Paula, I don't know if you know Paula, she's out of Duval County, she's retired school board member up in Duval. But I know that they are, I know that you have Master Board on the books, and I know that the two of them are coming in, and...
The 23rd.
And what will be really good for those people who haven't experienced or worked through Master Board is, it really does give you the opportunity to get to know your board members better, so that, what we always say is, when new boards form, there's this whole cycle of board, it's called Tuckman's stages of team development, and the first stage is forming. Well, you've already formed, you got new people, you're sworn in, okay? The next stage, after forming, is called storming, because people don't know where they fit in, they don't know the rules, they don't understand what's happening, they're not sure, they don't like maybe the way somebody's running a meeting, they don't like how to get something on the agenda, they're not, they're storming. And until you work through the storming and figure out the protocols and understand that people's motives are good, and everybody's really trying towards the same thing, that's when you can get into norming. And the sooner we can get you to norming, the sooner you create the conditions that are gonna be successful for a superintendent. I will say this, I'm hearing a lot of contention related to either an October 30 or a January 1 start date. Is there any appetite for kind of cutting it in the middle and saying November 30, December 1, something like that, which is halfway between the two, is that, is there any appetite for that?
Go ahead, Dr. McNeil.
The only reason I was going with October, the date that you stated, is because tomorrow night, we will be doing the evaluation of the superintendent and the contract. Normally, when all of that occurs, someone is dismissed as superintendent. I don't know what the vote will be tomorrow night, but if the vote is to suspend, I mean, to dismiss the superintendent and not have him to stay, therefore, we have to have an interim to come in and do all of this work.
We don't have any money.
What?
Nothing.
What did you say? I couldn't hear you.
I just said, we don't have any money, but never mind, I'm just being, saying my comment.
Anyway, my statement is, no matter how the vote goes tomorrow, if there is a vote on the floor, someone has to be in leadership. And so therefore, that's what I'm worried about, and the quicker that we can get someone in here who will be in charge of this district, is why I'm voting, why I want the October date. The sooner, the better.
Sooner the better, I agree with you, Dr. McNeil, but I don't wanna make sure we don't start progressing, that doesn't mean changes can't be made still. The interim superintendent needs to still function, so that we can do what's better for children. That still has to happen, as long as he's in that seat, because we are moving, we have summer school, I can't wait to see, that's what I'm saying. I'd rather, tomorrow, instead of dealing with what we have to deal with, I'd rather been hearing about what's the summer packet, what does that look like, you know?
You know, the summer packet was in the...
I still don't know all of it, I have questions, I'm just saying, we're in May, and we're getting ready to get out of school in May 30, May 31st, I'm just saying, we got to learn to stay focused on issues that relate to children. This kind of stuff we're dealing with now, it's a pattern. As somebody who specializes in behavior, this is a pattern, unfortunately, in this district, where we've had eight, just to be eight superintendents in 10 years. That's unstable. Just think about having to, think about that all the time, because we get so adult-focused, I'm gonna say it again, we're not focused on children. Thank you. So October, whatever, at this point.
So I am agreeable to doing what would help us be unified and to go forward. If it's splitting it in the middle, if it's, Dr. McNeil has a valid concern, I don't know where we'll end up tomorrow, but that's not what tomorrow, the board policies, we evaluate the superintendent once a year. The contract is something that's there, and we've looked after, you know, that. So anyone else have anything else? Mr. Delaney, you had something, a few minutes ago, I saw you, like, getting my attention, but I couldn't...
He was trying to get your attention while I was speaking.
I think he was talking about Master Board, I think.
Master Board, oh.
Yeah. So then, is the appetite October 30, November 30? I need to know what to tentatively come back with.
Let's split it in the middle.
So we split it in the middle, I think November 30th is the winter, not the winter break, but Thanksgiving, we usually have a week, I don't have my calendar, right?
Well, it's just a goal, and technically, as a goal, the very first thing the superintendent could do would be attend the superintendent conference with the board. I mean, that's a goal, doesn't necessarily have to happen, but I mean, if that's what you, if that would work to kind of help...
Why don't we target that?
Okay.
Late November. About late November? Late November?
If we target that, but if the process goes quicker, what do you say?
We target that, but if the process goes quicker, we'd be open to that? I think, it's a target, it's a goal, yeah. So if we adjust it and can adjust down quicker, yes, I don't think anybody would be adverse to that, so.
Okay. Then we will work on a tentative timeline. I'll be with Bill and John in this week, and we'll sketch out some tentative, a tentative timeline that could try to fit within that, and I will get it to you, I don't think I can get it to you by Wednesday, but I'm confident I can get it to you by the date of that other meeting, which is the 16th.
Andrea, I wanted to say, I have to agree with colleague Abbott with what she stated about the district right now, and it's unfortunate. However, whoever the applicants are, they will definitely not just come in as an applicant, they will know everything about our district. They're smart people, they will read, they will research, so it's no hiding anything. They will know what they are getting into, because they will have checked everything out, talked to you all at FSVA. So I'm confident that whoever is going to make an app to apply, they will know strictly what's going on here in Alachua County.
I'm always impressed with the work that the applicants do and the data, the way they can speak to the data in the district that they're looking to come to. Applicants will review board meetings, they will go back and see some of your campaign speeches, they wanna know, listen, applicants are, especially now, there's a lot of openings, and there will continue to be openings, flaglers getting ready to go through the same process, they get to choose too, you know, and they get to decide, do I wanna go here, do I wanna go there, where do I wanna put my eggs, is it worth coming to this county, is there some stability in this county? You know, Gainesville's got a lot of really good strengths here, so you do have a lot of good things that are appealing to people, but there are other options, and so they'll be looking at you as much as you'll be looking at them, but they will do their research. I'm confident of that, I agree with you. So Madam Chair, are you comfortable with, I'm sending you the liaison manual, I'm sending you the board little handbook, I'm sending you some sample surveys, Bill, John, and I will try to come up with a draft schedule that we can send to you, I can't promise it by Wednesday, but I can certainly get it to you, hopefully by the end of the week, at least a draft that can then be distributed to the board members, just to look at, see what it might look like. And then on the 6th, at the workshop on this Wednesday, you guys will discuss the survey itself, which can give me more direction to come up with a real draft that then you all can approve on the 16th.
Yes.
Did I miss anything?
I think you, I have those three things as well, and for us as a board to do when you give us the surveys, we will review the two to three samples that you give us, try to pare that down to 10 to 12 questions, or whatever, 10 questions, however, part down.
Yeah, when I look at, when I pull the ones and see what we have, I'll try to give you some parameters there that you can discuss.
Yes, and then we will get those, compile our responses back down, try to agree on some things, and we'll get that back to you through Ms. Green.
Perfect.
And I just heard that I didn't do, I have a citizen in the room, the citizen input? She has no comment, so, okay. You're welcome. Okay. Anything else, any other questions or concerns for Andrea before she leaves? Anything for our attorney? Okay, so thank you, thank you for coming, I think it was productive, you've given us a lot. If anyone wants the slide deck, we can get that to you as well.
Your IT people have it on their computer.
Okay, all right, so we'll get that. Thank you, we're, huh, the slide deck?